Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Wright?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Dr. Rendell, can you speak to the Board about the agenda for today?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we're going to do a budget update. Typically, at this time of the year, we would be presenting the Board a tentative budget for the coming school year. This year is unlike any other that I've experienced in Florida public schools. We are behind schedule, and it's not through any fault of our own. The public may know, and the Board members know, and the staff knows, that the state legislature ended their session very late this year and delivered a budget to all the school districts and other government agencies in the state very late this year in the summer. Typically, we get this kind of information, the budget numbers, in May, and we didn't get them until mid to late June. So that put us behind the schedule already. And then we also received some news days after that, that the federal government was withholding some block grants or federal funds for different programs. So we've been scrambling, trying to put together a tentative budget for next year based on the lateness of the budget we received from the state and the news about withholding of some funds from the federal government. So, we're going to give you an update on the process a little bit and some of that background information. We wanted to share it in a workshop, work session format, so the public can be made aware of some of these challenges that we're facing. We will present a tentative budget to the Board for approval by the July 29th Board meeting, as we do every year. And we will also have a final budget to present to the Board in September, as we do all every year. One of the things that is not impacted by the delay in the state budget and the withholding of the federal funds are the tax rates. And that's usually something that the community is really interested in. And we will be presenting those with the tentative budget in July and final one in September. And Paul can answer questions about the timing of that, why we're statutorily required to present that information. So, we are putting together a tentative budget for next year, but today, Ms. LaCensy is just going to talk about the process and some of the challenges that we're facing. So, I'm going to turn it over to her.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Trent, Board members, Dr. Rendell. He pretty much summarized what I'm going to talk about. So, what this update really is, is to talk to you about, you know, what it's going to take to produce the tentative 25-26 budget for the scheduled hearing July 29. And currently, there are several gaps of information, both the state and federal level, that we would normally have at this time, and will require districts across the state to plug in their best assumptions and footnote the uncertainty. That said, we have until the final hearing on September 4th to adjust as information comes available and make any changes that you would like to see within the budget. We also make amendments to the budget all throughout the year, but I just wanted to let you know what the challenges are that we're facing. Now, I think this is a fitting quote. You know, budget resources is a team sport, and we believe this is a very fitting quote that we all need to take to heart. So, I showed this slide quite a bit, but I'm going to add to it. The key takeaway from the slide is a budget is a plan, a starting point. It's an estimate of the amount of revenues we anticipate and an estimate of our expenses. As always, I say, it's not money in the bank, as revenues and expenses may not come in at the levels projected. School districts experienced multiple hits to anticipated FEFP revenues this year due to the rapid expansion of family empowerment scholarships. The scholarships directly increased the student count funded in the FEFP, triggering a mid-year proration levied on traditional schools while FES funding remained intact. When I say mid-year, that is when the school districts normally receive their third calculation, which should have arrived through December. This year, the third calc arrived in March. The third calc helps refine and finalize the amount of state funds allocated to school districts after the initial calculations and projections. This adjustment ensures that funding aligns with actual student enrollment and other relevant data collected throughout the school year. The calculation is based on actual student full-time equivalent data and allows for more accurate planning and resource allocation by districts as they finalize their budgets. The school districts received an additional hit at the end of the year statewide. A payment of $47 million from the state did not come due to the lack of funding. School districts were also impacted by a delay in receiving funding for students who attend public schools that were also issued FES accounts. The delays and prorations are deeply disruptive and jeopardizes the school district's ability to maintain a healthy fund balance, to ensure school district's financial stability. This is something that I always include in our presentations as well, is, you know, what is our budget priorities? And I always believe our budget priorities, it's really a moral document of what we actually believe in and value. Number one is protection of an excellent education. Job one is to provide our students an excellent education. We have to meet each student where they are. We must touch their heart before we reach their mind. Many times, this requires additional supports and intervention before we can even start to help them with academic acceleration and achievement. We also have to protect the effective workforce, develop and support and compensate committed and impactful employees, maintain fiscal strength of the district. We need to make sure we have adequate budget reserves to cover impacts, unforeseen events, and maintain stable credit ratings. And we also have to protect the taxpayers' interests, making every dollar count. Every employee has a piece of this district, and we need to be cost-conscious with that mindset with everything that we do. And again, I keep putting in the same slides, but I just keep trying to emphasize the point on all of them. This one is just, we just need to continue to stress teamwork. It's a team sport. And then if we focus on student achievement, there's no winners or losers. It's not my budget or your budget. It's what's best for student achievement. And that's what we really have to focus in on as budget scarce resources continue to come our way. So, a lot of this information came from FADS. But, so, this is what happened since the budget was approved, the state budget. On June 26, final dispersment of state funds to the school districts was short $47 million. Districts were prorated for a second time because we were prorated in the third calc. And then, again, we were prorated because of, enlarged, because 25,000 students being dual-registered as FES in public school. And this one, I guess, just imagine your child got an amazing full-paid scholarship to college of their dreams, and you've already gone to orientation, you've went and helped them decorate their dorm, and all, you know, they're ready to go. And the very day that school starts, you find out that the scholarship is on hold. What do you do? And that's kind of what's happening to us now. So, on June 30th, the federal DOE announces a federal review of $6.8 billion in federal funding for K-12 school year, starting the following day, which is July 1. So, on July 1, they said, they put these funds on hold. And then you can see the bavard budgets that were put on hold and what we own in the yellow. And then, those were the amounts that were put on hold. And then you can see the roll forward. And, you know, again, the schools rely on timely and predictable funding information to plan effective and upcoming school years, so they can make decisions about staffing programs and supports that directly impact student learning. So, all of that has been done. All the planning for the staffing is in place. And then, now we find that the money is on hold. So, you know, what do we do? The thing that the state came back and they said, well, we will issue a no-cost extension to help districts use the remaining FY25 awarded funds, which means, hey, you can use your roll forward. We'll allow you to use the roll forward that you see there. And hopefully, that bridges the gap. And, you know, again, these funds are on hold, but there's no guarantee that those funds are ever going to come. And then, as a footnote, we heard that the 21st Century Grants were going to be released, but we have not seen the funds yet, I don't believe. But, that was news that came the other day. And then, the IDA and Title I, those two title programs are, remained stable, so those weren't touched. And actually, Title I went up a bit, so that's good. And then, as of today, still, we have no fourth calc released. And that's what gives us our final balance. So, we're, again, when I talk about the footnotes and assumptions, we won't have a beginning balance for our budget until we know how we ended. So, the state is still working on the fourth calc and trying very hard to get it to us. Sure.
While these numbers are still up here, do you know if there's been any discussion for the first item coming from the state? Has there been any discussion of the state investigating this and the dual-registered students in particular, and appropriately applying the funds to which, you know, is it, or is it just, well, oh, well, we had dual-rolled students, we, you know, because some of that money was distributed to parents, right, at the beginning of the year, and then some of them came back into BBS schools, and we didn't get the funding for them. The parents didn't get them, weren't asked to give the money back. But some of that money is sitting, it's my understanding, in like the scholarship funding organizations for that kid, but the parents never got it, but we didn't get it either. So, is there, so my question is, is the state kind of just throwing up their hands and saying, oh, well, it is what it is. Y'all just have to deal with it? Or is there any thought that they would go ahead and try to figure out what that is, and then later give us the money that we're owed?
They are working, and that's the reason third calc was so late, because they didn't want to send something out with more cuts than we already received. And we haven't received the fourth calc yet. I know they are working very diligently. Step up, they just grew so fast, then without the proper processes and...
Right. And I know that there was language, I think it went across the finish line of, I can't remember, I'll tell you, because there's so much going on in the legislature this year. Did they pass the bill that said, moving forward, all the students are going to have an ID number, and so it'll be easier to track? Are you remembering if that passed?
Yeah, so I believe the solution to track the students individually with their student count number, their individual student number, either was passed in legislation or is going to happen through policy and procedures. So, I do believe that's the practice moving forward.
For the future.
Yeah, for this coming school year and beyond, an individual student ID number is going to be tracked, you know, whether they're a family empowerment scholarship or they're an in-person brick and mortar. You can only be in one place. And that didn't happen this year.
The other, so, these yellow categories, is this posted to the agenda yet?
No, we haven't put this out yet. We will.
I'll send this to you soon as we walk out.
As long as it's posted afterwards. These are the numbers that people are asking, you know, exactly how much money are we talking about? And I appreciate you putting the roll forward money up there, so we've got an idea of what we have left to work with. The catch 22 that this puts us in with the not being able to supplant, you know, and so let me, if you don't mind me taking, you know, flesh this out. I know that you had a conversation with us individually, Dr. Rendell. So, this idea of if we, and some district, I bring this up because some districts are doing this. They're saying, you know what, here's the rules. We've got to have these certain positions, so we're going to fund them another way if we can find it, right? We're going to dig deep, and we're going to fund these positions. We don't want them to go away. They're crucial to our success, blah, blah, blah. But then, if this, if the money gets released later, and they go, oh, okay, now we have the money back, we can fund that with our federal dollars again, then we would be guilty of supplanting, right, which we're not allowed to do.
And that's what the, I believe I have a note there. Across all the articles I've read, and what we're being told is DOE had a similar situation in 2013, and the letter basically allowed the concern because the local dollars were being loaned in front to fill the federal funding gap. And this letter allows you to, okay, the funding wasn't available, so we're going to loan or upfront the dollars until the funds are available, and then document. And they're saying that this would not be considered supplanting.
Okay, so we might be okay there.
Correct. So, that's been a point of discussion. There's been several calls with the Superintendent's Association and members of the DOE, and that is a concern of all the school districts across Florida. These are federal funds that are being withheld. Most of these funds are used to pay for people, for positions. And so, we had already placed a lot of people in those positions. If we decide those positions are worth funding with other funding sources like the general fund, and so we keep those positions filled, and we open the year with the funding coming from the general fund, and then these funds are released, and then we try to... And then we try to switch back the funding source to these federal funds. Technically, that would be supplanting. What Ms. Lozinski is talking about is in two thousand thirteen, there was a similar situation. And federal funds were withheld or something, there was a holdup. And districts were allowed to use general funds to pay for those positions or those purchases. And then when the federal dollars were returned, they were able to switch them back. And there was a waiver so that there wasn't supplanting.
And that's a waiver from the state, right? Or?
It was it was from the Department of Education.
Federal?
Federal.
Federal.
So it's possible that could happen.
Right.
And so that's part of the quandary. So before we go any further, just wanna orient a couple of things or explain a couple of things on the slide. So the first two bullets are the first two statements. The number like forty-seven million short and the six-point-eight billion in federal funding. The forty-seven million short, that's a state number, that's not a Bovard number. And the six-point-eight billion is
A federal number.
A federal number, not a Florida number. You can see the Florida number's four hundred million. And so like, you know, the twenty-five thousand students, for example, in that top number, that's not Bovard. That's the state. I just wanna say, you know, just make sure clarify that. But then, under this tab, this is Bovard preliminary budgets, FLDO on hold, that is our, those are our numbers.
Right.
So that is what we're being hit with or not hit with, that's what's being withheld right now. And so we're trying to make decisions on, do we fund the positions that were covered by those funding streams with general fund? Or do we eliminate the positions and shrink, you know, the footprint, that kind of thing, so.
Well, I appreciate that. And if I can just kind of wrap what I was, where I'm going up quickly. The the catch twenty-two then, and I'm glad to know the supplanting thing might not be as much of a problem as initially thought. But the catch twenty-two is if this supplanting is a problem, we can't do that. Then the other side that the wall that we get hit with is if we eliminate the positions because we don't think we're gonna get the funding, then the federal government can look down and go, I guess you didn't need that.
Correct.
And so we're kind of danged if we do, danged if we don't, as my mom used to say. But, you know, part of me where I, you know, is it a possibility to say, okay, we're going to, because they're just on hold. They were budgeted by the federal government. We know what our amounts should be. Is there a way to just say, we're gonna budget for these things, we're not gonna spend it till we get it? That's easy for me to say out loud, it's not easy to accomplish. You know, so we still have on the books, job descriptions, job, you know, but we're not actually putting those people in those places until the funny, but that way, it's it's still in our budget. And if the federal government does what they said they were gonna do with block grants and things like that, or they go ahead and release it, you know, I I don't know. I mean, it's it's not, it's it is such a difficult position that we've been put in to make these decisions. And what I believe you have told us, Dr. Rendell, most of these positions are school-based positions. Most of these are not people sitting up here at the district, even though these are crucial positions too. We're talking about positions in schools that have been part of our great academic success over the last couple of years.
Yeah, the large majority are school-based positions, providing supplemental support usually. There are some positions that are based out of ESF but are in schools every day.
Right.
So even though the
They're just in lots of schools.
Correct. And so, you know, that's what staff's been doing for the last seven days, is trying to figure out which of these are mission-critical. And if they're mission-critical, then how do we have other funds for them? You know, and, you know, we're just gonna make what we believe is the best decision on how to service our students. And whether it's supplanting or not later and all that, we'll just probably have to figure that out later.
Mr. Chair? Just to clarify, Cindy, you were, you had mentioned that it would be like getting a loan. You were talking, you're talking about referring to?
I was using the example, and and maybe it wasn't a good example, in my mind it was this morning when I was driving to work. We were ready to go. These, we have positions, staffing, where they're going to school to to, you know, and what who, what students and all those things. And then the next day, you find out it's on hold right now. You may not get the money. So if that happened, if you had a child in a scholarship going to college and all of a sudden it was on hold, what would you tell your child? Would you start paying it yourself or would you say, hey, we can't afford that? It's, it was just an example.
But just to clarify, the 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 extension, if we were to have a no-cost extension, that's just money that is there. We wouldn't have to pay it back, but
No, it's not a loan. It's, they're gonna allow us to use the roll forward from this school year. So this school year, for example, Title Two Part A did not spend all of their grant money. The left was about five-hundred-and-twenty-five K. So the state is going to allow us to use that roll forward. And that should bridge us for the, you know, the highest, the the most critical needs positions this year.
That's one time.
It's one time.
And if the federal funding doesn't come in, then we would be stuck having to figure out how to either keep those positions paid for or? Correct. And it's it's kind of like an ending statement to today when we get to the end, and I'll say it now, is we're we're gonna fund as many of these positions as we can this year, whether it's general fund or to be released later, federal funds. But we know that for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we have to get leaner. Like, we just have to. And, you know, that's gonna be part of the general budget presentation when we present that to you. Part of it's because what we see from DC is, yes, these categorical grants are going to be put into a block grant, but it's gonna be reduced by about thirty percent. So, you know, these federal funds, if they're released in the future, will be released in a different manner. You know, kind of to the states to, you know, distribute. I like the idea, you know, more flexibility and that kind of thing. But we've already been told it'll be a lesser amount. You know, so we just, you know, we had planned for this year with all these funds that we thought we were getting. And so we're gonna try to, you know, carry forward with as much of the plan as we can. But we already do know that for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we have to get leaner, so.
And we did hire, we've made some hires already.
Absolutely, almost every one of the positions that are funded by these block grants is already filled.
Thank you.
But they're either gonna, they're either being funded through Title One, the roll forward, or finding a vacant position within general fund. But no, nobody that's actually hired person needs to worry.
Yeah, we're not gonna cut any people, so.
Okay, so. So.
That's okay. Fourth calc, because I know it's always a quick turnaround already from when they send the final numbers and you guys are, because we have to get the millage posted. And we already know that number, right? We can, our.
Correct, the millage rates are set.
We are, we know what we need to publish, but we have to, we have to have preliminary data, right? But is, are they allowed, and because that's just such a prescribed timeline, are they allowed to send it past a certain date? The state?
Well, the the document that has to be sent by July nineteenth by law, by statute, is the second calc. So we'll get the second calc and it's gonna just tell us what the actual RLE is gonna be.
So we could get that before we ever get the fourth calc?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, you know, like Dr. Rendell was talking about, the what the the bill that just passed, the federal bill that was so much in the news, what it what it comes out to be is they're going to consolidate K through twelve, many of the grant programs at the current, and the current amount that those are worth is six-point-five billion. So they're going to consolidate all those grants that are listed. There may be a a couple more, but they don't apply to Bovard. And then they're gonna make it into a single grant block entitled K twelve School Funding Program. And it's gonna be for two billion dollars. So actually, Dr. Rendell, it's a seventy percent cut.
I got the wrong number.
Yeah, so we get through, no matter what happens, if we get the additional dollars back, you know, if they say, okay, we're not, we reviewed it and here you go. The following year, th- those grants are gonna be cut substantially. We still need to figure out how we operate with without those dollars. And these are the program consolidations, the most recent funding levels. And again, this is the federal level and then you can see the different grants and how much these are the current funding. And when you consider reducing that by almost seventy percent. And I don't know how they're, they plan on doing that. And what what I read was they're also eliminating Title Three for for English, uh, Title Three Part A for English language learners. So while presented as a means to reduce administrative burden is what the federal government is saying, the consolidation is also implies a loss of dedicated funding and flexibility to to what we do. And you, this is just the, what we're hearing right now. There's gonna be a lot more, but we just wanted to let you know the challenges that we're facing in order to build our budget, the things that we're considering. And, you know, the the titles are probably gonna be an asterisk. And we're gonna say we're getting it and then the asterisk will be like, or not, so. But we can say on the very top line that we're, no matter what happens, we're dedicated to an excellent education for all of our students and we will not waver. And we will, we'll be creative, we'll use our passion, our compassion. And we're gonna get through this and make sure that all the students get the the supports and the everything that they need. We just need to figure out and be innovative and figure out how we can do things differently. But we are not gonna let them not get the supports, because that's what, that's why we're here. And again, the current spending that we have within our budget is not sustainable. We we cannot continue to to spend because our revenue is not moving the same way. Our expenditures are growing and our revenue is decreasing, so there's got to be some changes. And with the plan that we were talking about and what we plan on doing, and Dr. Rendell, if you wanna take over, you can, but is to proceed as if the federal funds under review will not be released. Continue funding school-based position that advance student achievement. And that's when we're gonna, Ms. Harris was absolutely amazing about, you know, okay, these are some of the things that I can fit into Title One and how we can work this. And then using the roll forward, that is is a huge help. The maining criti- critical positions will be filled filled with vacant general fund positions. And if funds are released, we will be ready, right? Because we wanna spend them, we don't wanna leave any on the table because I'm sure they won't give us the roll forward. But they need to be well-thought-out, they need to be ready and mostly one-time items. Because, you know, if you get it late and you use it for salary, you're gonna have a lot of lapse. So it's gonna need to be, and we were gonna have to figure something else since the next year it's gonna be seventy percent less. So what I'm saying is that we need to make sure we have strong investments in one-time funding items that can make a difference for Bovard if the funds do come, in my opinion.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at all those different things that we usually spend general fund money on, such as instructional materials, if it's not mandatory to renew those materials that year, we can wait a year, that kind of thing. All those things will be on the table for twenty-six, twenty-seven. For twenty-five, twenty-six, what we're about to enter, it's a matter of finding what we can repurpose funds for to cover the expenses that we think are mission-critical. The last three bullets there is, you know, how we're gonna, our plan of work moving forward is all these vacant positions, any vacant position will be reviewed by cabinet and, you know, just determine whether we're gonna fill that or not. We already talked about transferring some capital funds to the general fund to pay for allowable salaries. We're gonna do that. And then, you know, everything's gonna be reviewed. And really, the last bullet is more for twenty-six, twenty-seven. As you know, we're just gonna start to really go from top to bottom and see, you know, where are places we can get leaner? And, you know, the thing that we're always gonna do is try to keep the schoolhouse, you know, intact. Like, not any resources at the schools remain intact. You know, we're trying to, you know, if we have to make reductions in positions, we try not to do that at the school.
And Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? Okay, so the the Part A reduction that we're seeing the seventy percent, that's a guaranteed, it is definitely reduced by seventy percent. That's final word, correct?
Well, I I used seventy percent. What what the language said was the six-point-five billion dollars. All those grants that equated to that number are gonna be consolidated to a two-billion-dollar grant. So I did the math.
Okay, so, and that's the seventy percent. So when we, on the screen before, when you totaled out the amount of grants that we have, our district has, it's roughly six-point-six million, not billion, dollars. And we're talking, those are majority, those are salaries, is what you're saying, in personnel. Would it be smart to look at this rather than taking a seventy percent hit in one year, which is going to literally leave some of these departments looking like no one is around, potentially? Would it be smarter to space that out and look at maybe incrementally saying, okay, can we reduce it by thirty-five percent this year? Is that a possibility? And then next year, look at it again and we'll have a better idea how the grant funding's gonna come down. I'm just afraid a huge reduction of seventy percent all in one year is gonna be very detrimental. That's gonna be almost impossible to recover from. And look at the additional thirty percent that are still there and say, okay, we need you to do everything that everyone else was doing. Would that be a better plan rather than hitting it all at one time?
Yeah, I actually think that if you go to the next slide, yeah, I think the next one. Yeah, those last three bullets right there kind of address that. Like, as we go through this year, any vacant positions are gonna be reviewed. And so that slower attrition rate, that slower reduction rate, rather than wait till next year and just not fill the positions, we might not fill some of them if they become vacant during this year. You know, so we're gonna be, you know, starting really from scratch after we open the year is, anything that becomes vacant during the year will be reviewing to whether we're gonna fill it.
We're gonna, okay. I don't know if that's gonna get us there to the seventy percent, though. It's still, I mean, the vacancies that we have are are pretty minimal in comparison to the amount of of positions.
Yeah, and the and the seventy percent comes off the six-point-five to the two billion.
Right, right, right.
In theory, you you might still see more of, more than thirty percent because some of the reduction is supposed to be overhead and things like that at the at the federal level. You know, so our share may not be reduced completely by seventy percent, maybe by fifty percent.
Okay.
You know, so.
And it's not the, all federal fundings will be reduced by seventy percent. It's specifically
Those buckets, correct.
It's the Title Two and the Title Four.
Right.
Which we do have the things besides people out of those two.
We do.
We do a lot of professional development
Correct.
And things like that of those. So if the Title One doesn't get cut by, I mean, if Title One getting cut by seventy percent is is catastrophic.
No, Title One and IDA is
Full, yeah.
They're staying.
And I, I will tell you guys, I'm not, I mean, we really shouldn't be surprised. I don't know if I shared with this with you guys or not, when I came back from DC last year. I, we, as we went into every Florida legislator's office, we spent almost the whole entire meeting talking to them about how important Title One, Title Two, and Title Four were because of the House at the time was talking about eliminating some of that funding then in September. So, you know, I, but I, can you go back to the one with the three things at the bottom? Were we already there?
I think it's four, actually.
Yeah, that one. I think this is a, I think this is a good plan. I know you guys have already been working on it since all these things have been going down. You guys have continued to work on it. I think it's, you know, considering that we might get some of the funding back in the year that we could, you know, carry on with after we get done with the roll-forward funding. funding, you know, you just don't know. The one thing that's positive for us going into, won't help for this school year, but the next school year is, next year is an election year, and generally the legislature is more generous in an election year, the state legislature. So, and after we, everybody sees the impact of what this is going to do to us, you know, I think we'll have, everybody will have some more clarity. Would you please make sure that as we get the word about, especially the 21st Century Grant, for those who are not aware, that's our childcare, it's kind of like Brevard after school, but it's fully funded, so it's free for low-income families, and that, that's the one that you're saying, we were hearing, we should hear news about that, you're saying we should hear news about that soon, or should have already dropped, they said it might drop soon?
Yeah, so last week we were told on a superintendent's call that that was going to be released, that those funds were going to be released, but that wasn't a quote from the federal government.
Right.
It was a quote from somebody that was talking to the federal government.
Okay.
So until they're actually released, we won't be 100% confident.
Yeah.
You good? All right. This is a good slide right here, I mean, if people are reading at home, this is exactly addressing the issue, you know, that vacant position review process. I like to look at this as, no matter what kind of news we get is great, now what? And we probably have always said, when a position is not filled, let's think about the, you know, a way of, is it necessary? Is it extremely necessary? And that's sometimes just talk because we just didn't fill a position, but now that we're kind of forced to do it, I think always looking to be more efficient and effective is important, and now we're kind of forced to do it. And to address, Megan, of course, we're not going to cut everything at once, but I believe once this process starts, that mindset is valuable. I think all at district and at schools, if we can be always thinking of how can we be more efficient and effective, it's going to be good, now it's kind of, now it's kind of forced, you know? So I'm kind of excited about that position, or the position review process and what it's going to bring to the district in years to come. I think getting leaner is always good for companies, and sometimes when you're funded as much as we are funded by the government, we don't think about that as often as we should. You know, the public is asking us to do it, and we may give lip service sometimes, but we don't actually look to cut as much as we could. But of course, Dr. Rendell, you said it perfectly, is we want to keep the schoolhouse the schoolhouse and touch everything outside of that as much as we can to be more efficient and effective. So when change comes, it's, sometimes you got to look at, it's going to be a good thing, and you know, we're not, we can't change it on the other end, so we got to look at this as it's going to be a positive, you know, that we're an A district and we can become more efficient and effective. I think that's, that's something that we can look forward to, but it's been, it's been an interesting summer, I'll say that. Board, do you have anything else? You know, so, Dr. Rendell?
No, I think that's the end of the presentation for today, and just know that we will have a tentative budget to present to the board next time we meet. And then, we haven't met in the, in public since our great news, but we do need to celebrate the fact that we are for the second year in a row an A school district, and that's awesome.
Yes.
Congratulations to all the people in the classrooms, the teachers and the students who did all the hard work to make that happen, and then all the support and everything else. But we had several schools make incredible gains, and so we're going to put together a presentation for the board the next evening, board meeting, to kind of review all of these successes, and then also areas for improvement, because even though we did see great successes overall, we still have some areas that we need to work on. So, but, didn't want to, you know, if the public's watching, didn't want to leave an opportunity to remind everybody that we have achieved an A rating for the second year in a row.
All right, before we go.
We forgot, Mr. Susan, are you still there?
Yeah, just want to say thank you so much, everybody, for, you know, giving it, you know, it's nothing like hearing on the beginning of the day that you're an A school district, and then on the end of the day that we're going to be into budget cuts and stuff like that, but we've been here before, we've got great leadership, as many of you have stated, and I'm looking forward to, you know, continuing to strive in Brevard, and that's it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Susan.
I have two quick things.
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, tomorrow's Mr. Thomas's birthday, so happy birthday, Mr. Thomas.
We can sing after we turn off the mic.
We'll let Mr. Brian do the singing, how about that? Just a curious question, as we, as you guys are developing the budget, since the PEP scholarships is kind of a new thing, it's been on my mind today, Board, are we, are we able, it's an unknown, right? But are we factoring that into a tentative for revenue and expenses? Are we going to wait to see how it goes this year and do those budget adjustments as we go?
I'll let you know next week.
All right, thanks, Cindy.
But to clarify, just for any of the public watching, we do have it set up that homeschool families or private school families can access our courses kind of à la carte, you know, if you have a high school student and you're homeschooling them and you're not prepared to teach AP Calculus, you can, you know, visit one of our local schools and enroll in just AP Calculus for a fee, and you could use your scholarship money to do that. So any homeschool families or private school families out there, you are welcome to come join us for part of the day.
That's just a wonderful program, I mean, that's just, yes, that's perfect. Any board member having anything further to discuss? As there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.